Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the July 2, 2025 Hyde Park Planning Board. Please stand with me as we salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda tonight is a continued public hearing, the Bellfield PUD Phase 2B subdivision. Come on down. And can I get a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Welcome. Ah, just good to see you.
Yeah, thank you very much for having us again tonight. Larry Boudreau with Bellfield, Jared O'Connor also with Bellfield. We, he's loading the presentation. The first item on the agenda is our Phase 2B subdivision. We, and even before I start, I wanted to thank you for, for helping us move the project forward to understand, you know, the most efficient way to move forward. We've had offline meeting two weeks ago. We gathered a whole bunch of stakeholders and that was very supportive and then went through the whole notes, circulated them. So it helped us really understand internally how to work our Phase 3 or the remainder plat. So we have a way going forward, which I'll explain tonight. The, then we had some other follow-ups, which was helpful. Your willingness to jump on a call and have meetings has been very, very helpful.
Yeah, this is such a large project and, and now there's so many elements that are all coming together. I want to continue that and we'll be sending out a meeting invite, but before the July 16 meeting, we'd like to ask you to join us for another informal work session.
Okay, terrific.
Since you're gonna be here anyway, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's been very helpful. So again, thank you.
You're welcome.
Everybody, all the comments and, and you know, as we continue to push this forward, there's a lot of interest or trying to balance that with, with everything that's going on here. The Phase 2B, we received comments from the town. Tad, thank you very much. And we responded to those and we just received additional comments and I can go through those in the big picture, but what I'd like to do, Tad, is set up a meeting with you and Pete and also at that offline meeting, we decided that we should set up a meeting with Pete and Tad and go over the full SWIP. So I think we could hit both at the, at the same time. The, the comments that we received this afternoon and the waivers we were requesting centered around the site plan, the grading and the drainage. Last year about this time, we had submitted the 2B project as an FDP. We had it fully graded, the drainage, so I pulled that map out. I do have a pretty good idea of how that building will be graded. I did include it in our presentation, but I'm happy to grade the building and, and show the drainage, but if you see here, we, we have it worked out, you know. So it's worked out. That was the current footprint at the time. Remember that was, that was an enclosed courtyard and then since then, we went to the open courtyard, podium deck with four. That was actually an enclosed parking garage, as you might remember, five-story internal deck. So that one couldn't pencil out, so we had to pivot, but in doing this, we did grade the whole pad, so I do have an idea. Happy to provide that for you. The other comment was around Main Street and the width of Main Street. I stopped it short of the building. I didn't want to pave the whole sidewalk and then have the building, you know, be forced to join up to the sidewalk, just in case a grade, you know, missed or something. I'm happy to do it. You know, we're not, you know, the open space, the 15-foot, so I'll just widen the corridor. I don't have a problem with doing that.
Are you talking about the 11-foot reduction?
Yes.
Okay.
Each comment, can you just tell us what paragraph, what number you're on? Because I'm just looking at this.
Okay, there's, yeah, those are the big high level ones. It came up several times. So number three is where it first, you know, comes up. We're, we're not shortening the width. I'm just, from a constructability standpoint, once that sidewalk's in, the building's gotta hit it.
That was number three.
And I wanted to allow some flexibility there. And then it comes up again on 14, note 14. And anything related to the ODA, so there's note five in there. Again, I just, just got this. I panned through it quick. Note 16, but I, I, I can make that wider, you know. Then the property line is right at the building face and you know you can be off an inch or, you know, and then you're redoing stuff, so I wanted some flexibility. Stormwater and grading, again, so I have a very good idea of what's going on. I'm, I'm happy to do it from a conceptual standpoint, Tad, using the current footprint, knowing that that footprint, you know, may eventually, when the developer comes in here, you know, with the FDP or the site plan, it may, may change, but I can get it close. And I do understand the notes that you're asking, you know, so we're requesting a waiver. You want it to be followed up with a note. So I do understand that. I'm okay with these as, as presented, as long as we have a follow-up meeting.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I'll schedule that with you and Pete and, and we'll do that.
And if possible, I, I'm happy to sit in.
Okay, yeah, I'll include you and.
But, but don't wait for, I mean, you know.
Okay, yep, yep. The, the planned comments that we had to address was a wetland note. I believe that was addressed, adding, you know, reviewing the easement chart, which, which we did, and, and then adding road profiles and, and pavement profiles or details, which we did. So I'll send it back to you.
Oh, okay, thank you. Well, you absorbed a lot in a very short amount of time. Thank you for that. I'm gonna go to Tad's, since so many things are almost, well, 100% of what you said is a reply to Tad.
So, so I spent most of my time, all of my time, on this preliminary plat, pre-submission review. So you've got all my comments and it sounds like you're willing to address them all. We're not gonna have to go back to the town board to change anything on the ODA to create a new road or anything like that. So that's good.
Right.
That'll shorten it. Other than that, you know, one of the, one of the things that may be helpful, I mean, you talked about staking out the corners of the building. That may be helpful for some of us to go out and see where that is in the.
Do you want the building staked out or the property lines?
You tell me. I mean, the board can decide, but we need a pretty good idea of where it is.
Yeah, we're thinking it's a good time to go back on the site and kind of see where we're at with things.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll.
And Tad, if you could pull that just a little closer too, that would be great. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm through.
I'm gonna stake them, I'll stake them both out, all right? The buildings and the property corners.
Do you need the roads?
Right, you can use some, the corners staked, and if you want, you know, like what they use on soccer fields, a spray paint bottle.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you know, they'll be very easy to follow. I'll have the GPS with me too, so we can go wherever you want to go.
That works.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll work to set up a sidewalk, as I know many members of the planning board have asked.
Okay.
It's been, it's been quite a while since they've been on the site and it wasn't the middle of winter and completely frozen over or muddy. So I know you can't do anything about the mud. If we have rain, it's gonna be mud.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a good time to get out there now. I just have to coordinate with La Bella, you know, to get it, get it flagged. So once it's flagged, I'll, I'll let you know and then you can schedule it. I'm sure Tom would want to see that too, so we'll get it out there.
Sounds good. Anything else, Dad? Ah, okay.
I don't have any comments at this time.
Okay. Now, Victoria.
I mean, I don't have any new comments.
Right. Yeah, so the substantial comments here were, were Ted's noting what was not complete and which ones you could ask for waivers. So it sounds like we're getting closer. We'll do some meetings.
Yep. Just so you know, Victoria, I did speak with Lynn, you know, our transactional attorney, and she's beginning to work on the declaration of easements.
Okay, great.
All right, so there'll be coordination on that.
Excellent, that's great. All right, I'm gonna start to my right and ask, Mr. Gercio, if you have any comments on this, this Phase 2B subdivision?
No, no comments.
Thank you. Ms. Wasser, welcome back.
Not at this time.
Okay. Mr. Waters?
Not at this time.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yeah, we just got the, you know, Tad's letter, like you did.
Yeah.
It's, you know, I think that the primary concern was about the road width and don't want to have to go back to the town board to change the ODA and such, so if that's something that you can work with, then I think we can.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll just make it wider, full width.
Great, that's a good answer. All right, so we're looking to adjourn this public hearing, right?
Till, till next.
To the 16th?
Yeah.
All right, so may I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing to July 16?
So moved.
Come on, guys, I was giving you a chance.
Nope, John did it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Excellent. All right, so we will tackle this again on the 16th.
Yep.
Next item on the agenda is a workshop item, the Bellfield PUD subdivision of the remainder. This is a big piece of pie to go after.
Yes, yes, it is. Again, thank you, everybody, for having the offline meeting last meeting. So that was the.
Twenty.
I got it right here. I have it right here. Here we go, here we go. I got my handy-dandy chart right here.
Yes, the 18th.
The 18th.
Ooh, I want to see what your chart looks like. Ooh.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty good. Um, yeah, so we met and, and the concern the, the town had and the board had was plating a subdivision that didn't have a site plan backup and approval. So what we're going to do is go ahead and work on the FDP approval for the entire remainder property and push that through and get the approvals from the DPW, DEC, DOH, and COR, because we are going to develop a small lake in the Crescent area and we'll go through all of that. And, and the biggest thing is the SWIP. So all those would be completed. Now, in the SWIP, we're gonna do it for the whole site, so we're going to assume concept layouts in the townhouse parcels, the patio homes, the second hotel, because you can't, you know, we, we need to address the SWIP as one's.
Yes.
Full site, so we understand what's, what's going on. And again, we'll receive a water quality cert from DEC on the whole thing. We'll get the DPW, we'll get the entrances designed from them, all signed off on, and we'll get through the, the COR. If, if the COR, Army Corps of Engineer turns out to lag, we'll, we'll pull that from the permit and we'll just keep going with what, what we have.
What's your timeframe on that particular task?
That's a good question. I'm meeting with the engineer tomorrow. We're gonna map it out and I'll let everybody know. Now, they've done quite a bit of work. They have all the roads profiled. We have a substantial amount of the grading done, but we're gonna finish it into other lots that, that haven't been done, so we could manage the SWIP properly.
Larry, can you, this sounds a little bit different from what I thought was, was happening. So you, you submitted something that I think a lot of us didn't quite, didn't have chant, the time to, to really dig into.
Right.
In the last few weeks here, which was the Phase 3 FDP submission. And what I thought that was, was just the rest of the roads. Am I, so now you're saying that you're doing the FDP for all of the lots as well? You're incorporating everything.
Yeah, yeah, what, what that was, that submittal was to support the remainder plat. It was to prove out the roads worked. You know, at, at the end of, you know, we originally were gonna push forward and get the plat approved.
Right.
Yeah, without an FDP approval.
Right.
Right. So we're switching it around because internally, we spoke, you know, what are we gonna do with a plat approval if we can't build the roads? So we're gonna do the FDP approval first. A condition, like a normal site plan, a condition to the FDP approval will be a plat.
So FDP approval on the roads only?
On, on, on the roads and the SWIP. You can't do the SWIP on the roads without doing it for the whole site, because.
So is this.
Moments ago, I'm sorry, moments ago, you said you're doing FDP on the whole remainder.
Yeah, 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 because when you're doing the SWIP, we gotta do it for the whole site.
So we were trying to come up with a way to get you through the process more efficiently, which is the opposite of what this is going to do. I mean, it's fine if that's what you want to do, but understand that's.
No, no, we understand. We could, 'cause, because I suppose we could do an FDP for just the roads, but then when we do the SWIP, we go, we're gonna take the water from the roads and go through a lot. Well, that lot will be developed. We'll have to change it at some point. So the more we thought about it, it made more sense to, now, when I'm saying the whole site, we're just gonna do, at the end of this, we want to be able to build the roads and, and the lots, the, the 82 lots. And then when the developer for the townhouses comes in, then he'll come in for a specific site plan for that townhouse. But at least we manage the SWIP and we know where that water's going, you know, 'cause you gotta do it holistically. You can't just do the SWIP for the roads.
So can I, can I list off the actions that we have in front of us right now for you and make sure we're on the same, same page here? So we've got subdivision for Lot 8, which is the apartment building.
Yes, yes.
We've got FDP, which we have for workshop tonight, on the condos, right?
Yes.
We have subdivision of the remainder is the third thing.
Yeah.
And then we have.
But, but the subdivision, subdivision on the remainder is gonna follow the FDP.
Okay, I'm just listing out the actions that we have.
Yeah.
So one of them is subdivision of the remainder.
Mm-hmm.
Fourth, I thought, was FDP that would just include the roads, but you're saying that it's actually going to include the whole thing. So it's four actions altogether.
Right.
And that last one is FDP for the entire rest of the property.
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question. So if the project changes, as each developer comes in, you're gonna have to amend the SWIP.
No, we're trying to avoid that.
Yeah, no, no, I don't think it'll change.
But as each developer comes in, they may not be able to control it.
I mean, I mean, we have a good idea where.
Oh, sorry, if I missed it. If I, if you talked about this two weeks ago and I missed it, move on.
It's, it could always be a risk. We're trying to minimize the risk.
You're just gonna worst-case scenario.
They're trying to, they're trying to do the worst-case scenario on each and every single.
Basically build it out to the max.
You answered it.
Such that.
Yeah.
We're looking at impervious service, service area that's allowed, right? And we'll, we'll design that.
Now, I got the answer. Worst-case scenario is what you're planning for.
Yes, yes.
Got it.
Okay.
So that when the next person comes in, they know they have to design within those boundaries.
Right, right. And it helps us, because the roads are all over the place, right? Four or five miles of roads. And so when we're managing the SWIP for the roads and, and then you got all these 10 lots that would go into the same place, we need to deal with it, you know, right, I mean, currently during the full SWIP, because otherwise you're going back revising the SWIP.
I agree with you. I just think, you know, you've answered my question on the SWIP and avoiding changes.
Right.
So when we say FDP in the PUD, that's a site plan. So are you submitting a site plan that has the hotel footprint, the villa footprint?
It's gonna have a footprint, a concept footprint. I'm not asking to get that, you know, approved for site plan development just for SWIP.
Yeah, but we had, we have some, FDP is some level of architectural, because you can't just look at a footprint. You have to understand how the building's gonna work.
Okay.
Right?
Understood. What, what our goal is, is to get a full SWIP for the site. If we can't do that, because we're not ready to do a detailed site design for the second hotel. But I have a pretty good idea of how big it is and how much parking it needs and what the impervious surface is going to be.
So your two goals are get the SWIP done.
Yep.
For the entire site.
Yep.
So you can design the drainage as you go along.
Yep.
And the second is the roads.
The roads and, and the, and the 82 lots that are attached and they're already graded. We graded all of, that's what we submitted last time.
The 82 lots, when we spoke two weeks ago, there was talk of, for the sake of, of simplicity and moving things along, of merging a bunch of those little lots.
Yes, yes.
So when you say 82 lots, is that the merged ones or are you?
No, no.
Going back to what we discussed.
The reason why we were going to merge them is because we didn't have a supporting FDP plan to prove out the lots. So to avoid that, we're gonna come in first with an FDP site plan. So now, when we do plat the lots, they're all proven out. You know, there, there's no guessing, you know, you know, that the lot would work. And the other thing too is, we can't sell a lot, and that was the issue that the town was having, selling a lot without having the roads approved. So now the roads will be approved.
It wasn't just the roads though, it was roads and.
Utilities.
Drainage, utilities, parks.
Yep.
Yeah.
So when you say, when you say FDP on the 82 lots, you just mean showing that they're developable?
Yes.
Because ultimately you have to show it on the subdivision plat. You're not actually plating it out yet.
No, we are. They need to show us how it's gonna be developed.
Exactly. So the FDP's not the plat.
No, but I mean, it's not gonna be the subdivision plan that gets approved right now, it's the FDP.
Right.
Right. And, and once you give us, and you say, all right, these things are met, you're showing lots, so the condition of approval on this plan is you gotta go get the plat. So, so then we go.
So are we putting the remainder on hold for the time being until you come back?
Yes, yes, yes.
So remainder.
Because again, internally, we didn't want to go plat it without being able to build the roads. That, I mean, we, that wouldn't have gotten us anywhere.
And I think we've both said the same thing as our concerns, right? But after the meeting two weeks ago, we thought it was going to be doing the subdivision with certain FDP elements to it, but not at a deep, but you've now, you say you've gone off and kind of studied the whole thing and in order to do the SWIP properly.
Yes.
You need to do the FDP for the entire site.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Is that, because we keep talking about grading elements and everything from trails to roads, all of this stuff, so by doing the FDP first.
Yes.
Of course, we're always, we've always got the remainder subdivision in mind. Nothing is as an island. We, everything is always working together.
It's all connected, it's all being done together.
Yeah, so.
If that helps, I, I, because I'm hearing that you've thought this through and that you think this works. What we need to decide is, can we make the process work?
Right.
On our side, so that it's clean and clear.
That's right.
And, you know, we had talked about the ability to make sure things were filed with the clerk, that that's a, that's a bit of a safety factor for the town, is to have these things filed with the county clerk.
Yep, yep.
So how, how does this work with your condo villas, which also require subdivision and are presumably part of.
Right, right, right. So for, so from a, a, a naming standpoint, Phase 3 is the FDP for the remainder.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that would exclude Phase 4, which is the condominiums. Now, the Phase 4 already has all the infrastructure there, so why should we, you know, tag that to the remainder to deal with all the other agencies that we don't need to deal with on, on the condominiums? We have, we have the road there, we have the utilities there. So that, this is our idea, is that that would be a separate phase pulled out.
Okay.
And we have talked about trying to get to a point where you can pull the trigger on certain phases here as they, as the, as the interest is shown.
Yeah, well, there, you know, the, the biggest interest, of course, continues to be the apartments, right? So, so that's what our 2B is all about. The other continuing interest, serious interest is in the condominiums and, and that's because the infrastructure is there. Everything else, you have to wait, you know, quite a bit before you can even, you know, get there.
You have the road.
Right, right, right.
You have sewer.
The, the townhouses, obviously, we hope to start that soon. I don't have a date for you, but we're trying to tie up all the financing for it and get going on it. And so, you know, that'll go, it just makes sense. You have all the infrastructure there. There is interest, let's, let's get it out of the ground.
Okay.
Okay.
So, let's see, let me, I wanted, I'd love to get, Tad, what are your thoughts?
Well, this addresses, because Tad did have, you know, how you gotta manage the drainage, you know, holistically.
True, true.
You got all the roads here.
Yep.
How you gonna do the SWIP? We're like, I can't answer that question unless I do the whole SWIP.
I think we take them one at a time and we'll get there.
Yep. Yep, but I, what I, what I do like to hear is that taking the drainage and, and understanding that it's, yeah, we were, we were having a little discussion about the Hamlet of Stabsburg and how, you know, we don't want that to happen and so by talking about it at this level, at this point in the project, hopefully that would never happen.
This was only within 100, 200.
Right?
Yeah. And I don't know if Larry's familiar with what happens in the Hamlet of Stabsburg, but there's a couple of.
It's at the, it's at the bottom of a hill.
It's at the bottom of the hill and DOT changed how they divert their drainage off of Albany Post Road and now it goes through the golf course. And there's three different size pipes that go from a residential property through to the firehouse and it floods because of the increase in water. So we're looking at, you know, is it, is it possible to keep open sections of stream as much as we can or drainage as much as we can and try to minimize the piping and where is that piping going? Is it on? Is it under parking?
Understood, understood.
Is it under buildings? Is it, where is it?
Yep, yep. I understand that.
Anything else, Tad?
No. So, I just wanna talk through a big picture. When, for lot eight, when you were doing the Bezuto project, you did get a waiver from the town board for the ratio. They allowed you to go 60/40. But if, if you're going now to the condos, you're gonna, A, you probably need to go get another adjustment of the ratio, but you're, where's the non-residential?
Yeah, so, it's my understanding that that ratio has to be met at the end of the job.
No.
No.
It does, it does.
But also along.
Each phase, each phase has to be met.
As you go along with the project.
So, that's how we, in my mind, that's what we were asking for, and if it's not written that way, then.
It says, "An authorization for Section 3, Subdivision 7 of amended concept development plan to temporarily and solely during construction exceed the 60 residential, 40 non-residential to allow 67, 33 percent, blah, blah, blah." But it has to do with lot seven.
Seven.
Which is Bezuto.
No.
Oh, okay. Well, this was.
Lot seven was the educational lot.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Which they got a variation for, for a square foot.
Okay.
So, so we'll, so we'll clean it up.
Sort that out, but I think you're gonna have to address how you're.
Okay, we'll address it.
And we, I think we've acknowledged that at various points in the project.
Modifying.
At the end, it does need to be 60/40. It's how do you, how do you go through the project at any given time?
We don't know how it's gonna balance out.
Right. So, we'll have to, we'll have to wrestle with that.
One day it's this guy, the other day it's this guy, and then we're trying to pull them all.
And sometimes it's, it's a good thing and everything's in, and then next day it's.
This was only for a particular state.
And this happens because you're subbing it out for development, basically, is what happens.
Well, we're not spec building.
Right, you're not, you're not building it yourself, is what.
Well, there's times when we're joint development. Right, right. But we're, we're not gonna spec build. What we're doing are, you know, actual developers of whether they're retail, commercial, or apartments. So, based on the market.
So Victoria, that, that's gonna become a, a how do we handle?
Yeah, I mean, I'm reading it as only being applicable to the amended concept plan that was before the board, when it issued these variances. That's my interpretation.
Okay, so, I'll have Jennifer give you a call, and you guys can decide what's next step.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I just, I think you just gotta address.
Because I asked, I asked internally, and I think we have a different interpretation, but we'll work it out, whatever we gotta do, we'll.
Well, we continue the discussion always, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Ms. Franson?
We had a, a meeting today to go over this informally and all the parts and pieces of it that's been submitted to date. And so I think we're trying to come up with the appropriate framework for addressing all these pieces and parts and getting to approvals. So I guess in my mind, what we've been calling an FDP, at least for this remainder, is, is almost really like a PDP, a preliminary development plan. Because you're not at a point where you're going to actually be looking for site plan approval for the specific, you know, buildings and the specific developments. But you're doing so enough that you can get the drainage, you can get the roads.
The roads?
Yes.
And the 82 lots.
And the 82 lots, to prove out the 82 lots.
And utilities.
Right.
So, but, but our code, I guess it requires certain information for an FDP.
We'll have all that on there.
Right. And that's where, that's why these discussions will help to nail it so that we know exactly what's required by the code, so that you can either, you're not doing something that is not required.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we've been through the phase two, so we're gonna take a lot of what we learned there, and we are going to let you know when certain trails have to, you know, go in, certain parks have to go in, you know, as they relate to the development. So we'll have all that planned out.
Can I, I, I must be missing something, but I, I'm not clear why the FDP part of this is necessary. You're trying to do, get drainage and the SWIP for, I guess, so the SWIP can't be, the SWIP has to be attached to something, I guess, and it can't be attached to the subdivision?
No.
Like you can't do, you have to, has to be attached to a site plan and process.
Yep.
Well, that's what he's saying, right? That's sort of what the.
But says who? Is that?
Well, so, I think this is, this was part of the discussion today. We were wondering why you couldn't show on the preliminary plat, the roads, the drainage, and prove out the SWIP, which would also prove out the lots.
Yeah, why couldn't all of this be part of?
You get preliminary plat approval, but you don't go to final plat approval, then you start doing your FDPs and your final subdivisions for whatever section you want to pursue. I kinda thought that's how we left it, the last go around.
That's, that's what I thought we were.
They wanted to do the, they wanna put the roads and utilities in. So I thought, a little bit different, I thought they were gonna propose an FDP for the roads as a phase.
That's what we all thought, I think.
Which essentially we are, that's what we're doing for the FDP, but for the roads, we're doing the SWIP, and then the SWIP needs to assume a certain amount of, you know, concept development, so we're managing the whole SWIP and not a piece of it, right? You can't, you know, a house is gonna drain into the road, you know, through the driveway it's gonna drain in, so you have to account for it. So that SWIP isn't just for the road, it's for, it's for future development. It has to, it has to take into account.
Right, understood. I think what you're suggesting are the things that would typically go on a subdivision plan, because you want to get, you wanna prove out the lots that they're, that they're feasible, plus you're dealing with the utilities, the drainage, and the streets, which you would typically show on a subdivision plan.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's what we're doing.
So, well, I, I think we.
But, but when we're done, we'll have a site, an FDP approval. You know, once we're platted.
So this gets back a little bit to like, what is an FDP?
Yes.
Because for other FDPs, we've done, you know, building massing, and we've done elevations and all this different stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
And now we're saying, oh, that doesn't actually count as part of this FDP. This FDP is basically a subdivision plat with utilities and stuff and a SWIP. Like, that's what this FDP is.
Well, 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 again.
It's like a PDP.
But we don't have that. That's courthouse support, it's not in code.
We don't have that.
So, so the townhouses, right? So the townhouses was a real, true FDP site plan, it was at that level of detail?
Yes.
That, so that's.
It was both.
That is, yes.
And, and in order to get that, the final sign off on those townhouses, we had to plat it.
Yes.
And so I had to go get it filed and show the proof that it was platted.
Right.
Once I brought that up here, then the site plan was signed.
So why can't all of these elements that you're talking about including in this be part of the subdivision? Why is the FDP necessary now?
As, as long as code-wise, that, you know, I'm able to build the roads when we're done. You know, we wanna be able to build the roads, so you can't build the roads with the subdivision, you need the site plan.
You need the, you need this, yeah.
Right.
So in a classic subdivision.
Okay.
You would plot out where the roads are, you would plot out approximate placements of houses and sewage treatment, if, if septic, if you had that, and driveways and, and things like that, to make sure it's all doable, and that's what gets filed, when you file the plat, that's what's on there.
The easiest way to think of this is our 2A. We did the site plan on 2A. The condition approval, it was all approved conditionally.
Those are the townhouses.
Yep. And one of the conditions was, of course, DOH, so we got that. DOH stamps the Mylar to allow us to file the map, and we filed the map, presented that, and then.
And it's now showing up when you do, when you look at the parcel access?
Yep, and then we came, we showed the proof of the filed map, and then Michael signed it. So in this case, we do the FDP, we'll get through all the agencies, the planning board will say, okay, we're good. The walks, the parks, you know, the roads, the grading, we agree. But now you gotta go plat these lots. As a condition to us signing this FDP or site plan, you gotta go get it platted.
So.
And then we go get it platted and, and show the proof of the plat, then you sign the FDP or the site plan, that will allow us to build the roads and, and do the grading for the, the roadways and the lots.
And then subsequent to that, the next developer or joint venture that happens would come back for site plan approval on.
The townhouses.
Yeah, the element that they're actually going to construct.
Like the townhouses, because the townhouses, we're just doing conceptually for the SWIP.
Right, right. It's that, it's that, here's where the house can go.
Exactly.
And this is how big the house can be.
And we're gonna figure, and we're gonna figure worst case scenario.
The engineer's not sure.
Except I'm used to seeing that on subdivision.
Well.
It will be on subdivision.
If, if we did all that on the subdivision, and then when it was, you know, signed off and platted, and we can go build the roads, great, you know.
Well, so that's what we were talking about, so maybe get to preliminary plat, and when you have the preliminary plat, can you go off and build the roads? And then you come in with the FDPs for your specific development areas.
Well, they could just give us an F.
If, if that, if.
And we, we thought that that was gonna be a shorter path to getting you the roads.
But FDP is really about the site plan, not the lot, so it could be. Well, let's, Pete's not here.
And this is why we have our discussions to try to work these through.
This is kind of a, it's, it's new than, we were going down a different path, is what we were thinking, so this is, could work. I think we just need to think through it. I think it'd be helpful if maybe you could write down what you think the steps are with this new proposal.
Yeah, that would be great, at a very high level, just.
I mean, just what you just went through.
Right, right. Well, again, when we last met two weeks ago, the issue was your concern with doing the plat and not having, you know, a site plan approved to build the roads.
But also, the concern was, we understand how this process is working now, you're gonna have a different partner for every section, so you really can't do the planning. Well, you can do it, but it just comes back to us. And we don't wanna spend your time and money on a plan that's not, that's only very conceptual.
Understood, and we appreciate it. Well, it's not conceptual, the lots, we, we know where the lots are gonna go, the single family and the cottages, those are fixed, and they, then the roads are fixed. But what we don't know, of course, are the townhouses and the patio homes, and that we totally get, that they'd have to come back for, but at least we can understand the SWIP. But I, but I, but I'll do that, I will, I will write it down, Jared and I will write it down and we'll, we'll circulate it.
Okay. And then I guess we should plan the next meeting first.
Yes, and, and I would ask, maybe Victoria or Bonnie, the, the way we were thinking in terms of doing the, doing the subdivisions first with, with which elements in order to get them the road?
Right.
So that we can kind of walk it through, and it could be that there, there are two different paths that get you to the same place, and both work within our code. Because I think that's, and then look to see, is that, this one sounds longer to me.
Yeah.
Larry, yours sounds longer, and like, we're still gonna be working out FDP issues when we could be just.
Building roads.
Roads.
Looking at the overall.
For the road.
We start talking about the chunks and the roads.
Totally get it, but for the road, we'll have to get DPW's approval, right?
Yep, yep.
On pro work.
Yep.
We have to go through DEC.
Yep.
You know, gotta get a water quality cert.
Okay. I mean, look, it's your project, so it's your strategy, but this is, let us just think it through.
Yeah, we, and we, I think we'll be able to come through, and it, it might either be one or the other, or just a combination of elements.
Were we thinking of another?
The 16th.
The 16th, perfect.
Yeah.
Perfect.
We do 430.
430.
Tad isn't available, but I guess we'll do the best we can without Tad.
Yeah, should we wait till then?
You will probably have another meeting with them, with Pete, before that.
No, Pete and I, Pete and I are.
Oh, you're both gone?
Passing in the night.
Oh, okay. Okay, all right.
Wait, should, should we still have that meeting?
No, so Pete's away, and then when Pete comes back, Tad's away, so.
Do you wanna move it to like the 30th of July? There's no meeting that night, we could.
Is Pete here the 16th?
He's supposed to be.
He is, but Tad's not.
I think we can make some progress the 16th and.
I do too, I do too. And then, like I said, it's not like this is the only meeting we're gonna have.
Right, okay. All right, terrific.
Okay, good. Because again, we're trying to work, be really good partners with you.
You're, you're wonderful, so we'll keep planning forward.
Okay, so, I think we can move on to the next discussion, which is another Bellfield item, PUD Phase 4 FDP condos and villas. So this is kind of a, it's not a, you have, you don't have your full application, it's like a pre.
Yes.
It's a pre-application, it's a.
Yes, yeah, we, we.
Early thinking, yeah.
We, we spoke last week, and we're trying to get a sense of where the board is at on this, similar to the apartments, we, where we requested a fifth story. This one here, to get the density, we're requesting a, I say fifth story, but, but the way it's grading, you only see four stories. So, we submitted the site plan and the grading plan, it's over here, and we did show the cross-sections, and you'll see in the cross-sections that there, you know, for, you see the, the podium garage is put into the ground, except on the back side and on the far side where you're entering it, but other than that, it's, it's in the ground.
So it's like a walkout garage on the back end, the rest is sub three.
Yes, yes, yes. Yep, so we can show that to you, here in the concept plan, Jared, can you circle with the apartments for?
Can you blow that up at all?
Excuse me, the condos.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you. We're a little far.
So I believe there were condos on the north side, and then on the south side as well. And then there's a concept on.
And the footprints remain the same?
No, 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 those footprints are.
Totally old.
Those were conceptual.
Conceptual, the parking, I don't even know where the parking is in these plans, I mean, it looked good, but, so what we're, okay, that's, that's the plan with Phase 2B on it?
Yeah, this is the current FDP overlay.
And lot seven?
Yep, onto the amended plan.
Yep.
So that's what we look like now.
So, okay, yeah, so go to the next one. So you can see the, the 12 townhouses on the bottom of the page.
Mm-hmm.
And if you haven't been out there in a while, the site's at subgrade, so the roads, that cul-de-sac or the roundabout there, the entry drive coming in, and where Jared has a cursor, that's at subgrade. So subgrade means two feet below finished grade. And then we overblast all the rocks, so when we put in the utilities, we already dealt with the rock. And then the condos are bar buildings, we were looking at a U shape, but for purposes of this, this is pretty efficient. The, it's a podium deck, so same thing, the first floor is the garage, and then four stories above at, you know, type five construction, one space per unit in the garage, then the remaining half space per unit is parked outside. So it's nice, because we're decreasing impervious surface by sticking that one car per unit in the garage, under the garage. Buildings, we picked up the numbering, we just added on, so we were 29, circle 29, Jared, yeah, right there, that's 29, so then this next building here to the left is 3,000, 3100, 32 and 33. 3,000 and 31 have an interior courtyard that's at grade with, with the first floor, not the garage floor, but the first floor. And because of the shape of the parcel and the grading, the, we had to put the parking interior to the two buildings, but there's just natural grade on the outside of them. So this is all parked, we, we show how to get into the garages. Okay, go to the next one? Actually, this is the updated grading plan, when we graded it, we reworked the access into the garages. We had to do the grading, so we knew what finished floor the building was gonna be Uh, we had to do the grading, so we knew what finished floor the building was gonna be at, so we could, uh, do a cross-section. Uh, and we did a cross-section straight through to West Dorsey and to Route Nine. And, um, and then also what's shown here are the six hotel villas. Those hotel villas will be tied to, um, the Inn at Bellfield.
Nope.
That shaded area is an isolated wetland, and when you read the core permit, they don't take any jurisdiction over it. Uh, so we're looking to create a, a small little lake there.
Larry, what is that, on those, on the fourth story, on the podium, what is the height, the approximate height?
So we'll, we'll show that in the section. So if you zoom into the sections there, so there's the site plan with the cross-section. So we went twelve feet floor to floor, so that you have the ten-foot.
Yeah.
That's what the.
Ceiling, ten-foot ceiling interior space.
For a condo, that's what they, that's what he wants. And so then you see the, um, uh, the, those are the actual elevations per the grading plan. The one fifty is a grade for the, excuse me, parking, um, garage, and then twelve feet all the way up. And then the total height between the exposed, uh, area is fifty, can you zoom in there?
Fifty-three point five.
Fifty-three point five on, on the south side, and then because the garage is exposed on the left side there, or the north side, then that goes up. What's that, Jared?
It says sixty-five point five, but it's going, yeah, okay, yeah, it's going to the.
Yeah, and tha- that's going to the midpoint of the, of the roof.
Right, and how, what's, what's the limit on height in the section for the development areas?
Forty-six.
Forty-six feet. So this takes the section through, uh, West, West Dorsey Lane there, so that, a hundred fifty, that's a hundred fifty-eight feet. It is a very thick, uh, natural area, coming off of nine, um. And we went and did drone photos, which we have, so you can kinda see how thick the vegetation is. This section takes it out to the existing house that's on the south side of West Dorsey, that elevation is one sixty-three. The road is, actually, that house goes down. The road's at one sixty-eight, one sixty-eight, and then you can see the elevations for the, uh, for the building. Uh, it is interesting, cause the natural grade does go up, and then it, then it comes back down. So at the cross-section, we had to cut it to get it to work, but past this section, the road goes up, and you can see the dash line there. That goes up, um, a, a little bit higher, again, that's the natural grade, so this is kinda tucking in behind a, a high ridge there. And, and you can see, we put these walls in, so that would preserve the grade. We're taking the section where we made the cut in the road, which would make it most visible. If it were visible, uh, you'd probably, at leaf-off condition, we'll have a filtered view. But it's very thick, and you'll see it in, in a minute. But where the walls are, we're retaining the grade, and, uh, we're also retaining whatever trees are there. So that is a natural buffer there that we're retaining. This is three thousand and thirty-one hundred, um, so you can kinda see what's going on. This section actually goes through the hotel. There is a little corridor between Lot Seven and the hotel that would have a sightline through. So that's why I assumed, you know, if the hotel weren't there, that's kinda where the sightline would be. But here again, um, there's significant trees left there. I, I drove by there today, you can hardly see the hotel. Uh, the hotel's three hundred and thirteen feet off of nine. I was driving south. When you go, the buildings are actually eight hundred and one feet off of nine, pretty far. Jared, can you go back up to the first, the distance from West Dorsey on, on, uh, on this section? It's, uh, three sixty-two from, from the property line over to, to the building, uh, siding of the building. One thing Ann and I talked about was providing a massing diagram, so we did do that.
Hopefully it doesn't look like that.
It's just massing.
I know.
Yeah, it's, it's just massing, so you can kinda, you know, feel it a little bit. What's neat about this, for us, anyway, cause, um, the through building there is the, are the apartments. So as you look through, the apartments go up, and then everything, you know, it's pretty far away, but, but there it is. Uh, that, or, is, as you know, we did a drive-through model previously, and so this is all modeled in. As we develop, we can grow this model and add the buildings. So to us, you know, we're working in two dimensions, so to actually see it is pretty, it's pretty cool. That's, uh, thirty-two and thirty-three.
Yeah.
Yep, so that's, uh, thirty, uh, three thousand and thirty-one. That's the interior courtyard there. And the grade, you know, again, is, is built up.
Is the courtyard above the garage, so it's higher up in the street?
It's the first floor.
So that's a, so you only climb up from the sidewalk?
Yes, yes, we.
So if you're walking, you'll see a berm, like a.
Like a berm?
A berm?
Yeah, it's, it's sloped up.
It's not really a berm, but it'll look like that.
Yeah.
That's why you're only seeing the four stories from this side, too.
Larry, what's the length of each bar built?
You know, I meant to get that, it's less than three hundred feet, because I checked.
What is the length of what?
Yeah, three hundred feet's the. But I'll, I'll get that. Okay, so where's this one? Oh, this is, um, between the gap. You do see a little bit of, uh, of the hotel villas there, they are a two-story building there.
What's that? What'd you just circle?
This is the, the hotel villa massing.
Oh, okay. How tall are they?
Uh, two stories.
Yeah, so, uh, we're gonna do ten feet, so it's ten, twelve, twenty-four, plus to the mid, you know, so thirty-two feet.
I'm just curious about the placement of the, um, the condos, and then with the villas in between.
Mm-hmm.
Just curious why that arrangement and not grouping all the condos and putting the villas closer to Bellfield. Trying to work with contours and.
Okay, so, well, we, we'll have to go to the site plan.
Concept plan?
Um, the site plan that we did for, for these guys. Yeah, zoom out, yeah, so you're referring to the six buildings there?
Yeah.
Pretty close to the hotel. You, you know, it's not right next door, but there's sidewalk access right on down. I mean, we walk back and forth from our trailer to the hotel. Yeah, and it's, that's the same distance.
Okay.
So it, it, it's not far.
And then otherwise, you're, the, the way the four buildings are, you couldn't put them, the way the, the way the contours work, you have to kinda.
Right, we're.
Spread them out so that they're like that.
This layout's honoring that current wetland eight.
Gotcha.
Uh, which will be some kind of pond there, but for purposes of, of this, we did not wanna go in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
And were you asking about road, so they can't be rotated, so that one is on the, the road?
Well, you're going around a corner, so they, they couldn't, there's no straight line for them to line them up next to each other.
We, uh, we did do a drive-through. If you're, if you wanna see that, we did too.
Of course.
So this is coming in from West Dorsey.
Might wanna slow that baby down.
What's the speed limit there?
So stop right there, so you can see the, uh, townhouses to the left and to the right. The garage, of course, is on this side, and the grade slopes up like that.
Did we just come out of that circle? The, the.
No, no, no.
Entering off of West Dorsey.
Okay, thank you. Ah, thank you.
Yeah, so it's twenty-eight hundreds to the right.
Those are the hotel villas. That's, uh.
Thirty-one hundred.
That's one of the bar buildings.
Yes.
He referred to them as bar buildings. The bar is actually referred to in a residential building as the width of the building, not the length.
Okay.
But he used the term bar buildings, so.
Yeah, that's.
I copped.
Okay.
But the bar is really the.
I didn't, I didn't pick up on that.
Uh, these are the.
Not to confuse.
These are the approved townhomes, three stories at this elevation, and then this is the proposed massing on the hotel villas at two stories.
How do the villas work? Are they ownership?
Yeah.
What makes you want to ask that question?
So they're, um, I mean, we can, we can put together exactly how that works, but it's, but it's my understanding that they're, uh, you know, owned by one entity. You know, in relationship with the hotel. And then they, you know, it's a rental pool, uh, some people live there for six months, uh, that kinda thing. They aren't for-sale products, if they're hotel villas. So this is, uh, thirty-two and thirty-three. Again, that's the apartment building straight ahead. And then to the le, now, we didn't landscape this up, because we wanted you to see, to see the massing.
Yep, yep.
And you can see the, oh, stop right there, Jared. Uh, go back a little bit, if you can.
When you say the apartment, you mean the, the lot?
The condos, right.
One hundred, two hundred?
Yes, correct, correct. So, so here, the garage goes in on the side, so there it is. You can see how the grade slopes down. So this is where the five-story exposure is, on this side, and on the other one. You can see how the interior courtyard is at grade with the first floor. Because the idea is, we wanna make that a benefit, right? We don't want it, so you go down to the first floor.
Twelve-foot incline from, from grade on that garage.
And then this, uh, access is on the north side of the building, cause we had more room to get it in. And so the fifth-story exposure is here. On the far side, the, the grade slopes up, and, you know, buries it into the grade. This is the ma, uh, main, main drive-in. Um, and this building on the right is Lot Seven, so we had that modeled already. It's not approved, it's just modeled, that was the concept. And there's the apartments right there with the courtyard. You start to see it again, uh, there's.
Is that much higher?
No landscaping, but we do show the building, there's a stone tower. Boy, that thing's been tough to get.
And to the right, that's the.
That's the parking garage for Lot Seven.
For Lot Seven, thank you.
Hidden from.
Pentagon building?
Hidden from Route Nine.
Yep.
So this would be three thousand?
Yep. There is a wall we put in that needs to go in there. This, this fill needs to come up in this model, because, uh, again, it's forced like that, it'd be more like that.
Yep.
Yeah, how long of a walk would it be to the nearest coffee shop from, from these now? Is it walkable?
We, we walk from our.
Train line.
Our trailer to the hotel, you know, every day. And, um, you know, as long as there's a sidewalk.
In general, it's, there's a radius a quarter mile, and then a half a mile?
Oh, yeah, it's less than a quarter mile.
Okay.
I think the second hotel is like a half mile, which is further back from where all of this is, from kind of where the village core starts.
But like, if these folks wanted to walk to the coffee shop, it's within a quarter mile?
Yeah.
Or they could, there's, uh, coffee at the hotel.
Are you opening a coffee shop there?
Uh, there's, there's twenty-four hour coffee there. And then, of course, is the, uh.
The bummer?
Yeah, yeah, the, um.
Storyteller.
Storyteller. I knew that. Would you guys?
Yeah, the bars love it. I was just asking as far as, um, cause it's, it's hard to tell on this how.
Is this one?
Yeah, it's very one.
All right, speed it up, cause this is kinda the same at this point.
I see her enough.
Yeah, okay, all right. So, so that's what we have, um, we're, we're.
Do you have the drone photos?
Oh, the drone, yes, yes, these are important to see.
I won't show all of them, but we, um, went to two points on the site, um. Right at this corner here, uh, where the grade would be similar to the garage, and then we went up, um, twelve feet up to sixty feet? Just to show what that looks like, and we did the same thing at this point here, near where the second, um, building would be. And, uh, I'll just get to.
I think you can go through them pretty quickly. They're just photos, they're not stuff.
It's just kind of ground level, twelve, twenty-four, thirty-six, forty-eight, sixty. So that's looking west from building thirty-one hundred, and then looking south from thirty-one hundred, zero, twelve.
South is West Dorsey.
Yes, towards West Dorsey. Twenty-four, thirty-six, forty-eight, and sixty.
That's where, uh, the townhouses are, right there.
Yeah, this is where the townhouses would be.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine hundred.
And then. So building thirty-two hundred, this is looking south towards West Dorsey, twelve. Twenty-four, thirty-six.
Get you there.
Forty-eight, sixty, little bird. Um, pivoting, looking towards.
Yeah, those, those trees that are there, they will remain. We, we hit the clearing line, that's the turtle fence. So we cleared the trees out for the townhouses, put the turtle fence up, and that's it. There's no clearing behind that.
And so this is looking at the closest section of West Dorsey, so twelve, twenty-four, thirty-six, forty-eight, sixty. And then, I just went up as high as I could until I could see something, and it was around a hundred and sixty feet from grade. And so that's where we could see the first sign of the road or a structure. And then again, I looked south, and that's where I could see a little bit of a house, telephone poles, so. That's how high I had to get in order to get a sightline down to the road. And then this is looking west again, twelve, twenty-four, thirty-six, forty-eight, sixty. And then, again, if you were up to a hundred and sixty, it would be looking all the way across the river, so, which we're not obviously building to that.
Wow, nice.
Regarding the turtle fence, is that associated with that wetland that's adjoining the villas and?
It, it, it's related to Phase Two A. The whole Two A had to be wrapped with turtle fence.
Did, were turtles found there, or it was just habitat?
Nope, no, no, they weren't found anywhere on site. There is a, a buffer zone off-site, and the fact that we're adjacent to a buffer zone, they may as well put the turtle fence on.
Okay.
We had to put that turtle fence on, all the monitoring stuff, all the signage, uh, and DEC came out and inspected.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we wanted to, to present this to the board and get some, some feedback, cause, you know, the, the step, the process here, um, is, the action is at the town board level. But the recommendation comes from, from the planning board, so if there's any.
Can you refresh my memory? I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt you. Um, what was the elevation of the apartments that we had that? Sorry to interrupt you. Um, what was the elevation of the apartments that we had that increase to?
Sixty-five feet, four inches.
Thank you. No, thank you for getting that to us, that's a lot of work. Um, this is a, I, I understand that this is a, give us your impressions, so, guys, you know, whatever your impressions are...
Or if you want any, you need additional information...
Yep.
We provide it.
Okay. I'm gonna start with Tad, though.
I review the plans for completeness with the code, so I think it's, you know, I, I don't, I shouldn't have any weight in an opinion for the height variance.
So, it's looking, like, if they complete the application, it...
Yeah, I don't have any of that yet, so...
Right, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're, it's hard, it's hard to advance it if, if we can't get there.
My impression is that it does not feel at all like the town of Hyde Park, and I thought that we were supposed to have, maybe, maybe the single families on the top will feel more like the town. It feels very city-like with the heights of the buildings. That's all.
Yeah, we've not, we have never come this far in the concept plan.
No.
There was just, there was always kind of a... Lot of hand waving and, you know, but this is, this is an actual, here's what it could look like...
Right.
For this section.
At the density that was there on the plan, uh, we put them together...
Right.
There's gonna be shared amenities, you know?
Okay.
You can't send somebody way north and...
Could you put up the original concept plan area that, I think that might be, that might help me, anyway? Near the top, yeah.
Yeah, it was just supposed to be...
The Hart Howardin plan?
Yes, yes. So, we can kind of look at, at... I think you're asking that hard disk to do an awful lot of spinning. Anyway, while that does its thing. So, it's looking not like Hyde Park to you? All right, good, that's, yes, thank you. Because we're gonna have this with every section, this is all we've ever seen of the full concept plan. And then we've done design guidelines and, like, how this could look and feel. We have a book that, that shows this, which I would like to kind of s- look at to see what we envisioned, or, again, it was all very theoretical.
Yep, so, so here are the, the condos here, and these here were a cluster of patio homes. And then here's the, the, um, wetland eight in between. And then here's the other, the north end of the condos here. So, we brought these and put, um, here, well, here, so condo, condo. And then this, uh, commercial space here will just flow into, will be an extension of, of this.
Thank you, that, that'll help to just kind of have that up. Bonnie?
So, I, I think this was really instructive for the renderings you were doing, the drive-throughs. What has happened and how this has evolved, obviously, when Hart Howardin did this, this was supposed to be hamlet-y, small buildings, spread out over the site. And as this has evolved, for various reasons, financial, et cetera, everything's being condensed into larger buildings with, you know, parking below. And again, applicants requesting this for financial, fiscal, other reasons. But you really get a sense now, when you took it from the main drive-in, um, going past the educational building, then seeing Lot Eight apartments with the podium, and then going up to the condominiums, how that flavor is different now. It, it's not what it was. It, it's big buildings, essentially, that have been condensed. And so, it's different. And that's up to the planning board to determine whether this is fitting, whether it doesn't fit, if, you know, you favor this or if you don't favor this. But, again, I think that was very telling, just in terms of really now being able to visualize how that southerly segment of the overall project has, has changed. You're retaining the remainder of it up on the ridge and the townhouses, et cetera. And so, I think it's a matter of just how do, does this fit altogether? Are there things that could help improve it, give it a little bit more of that hamlet flavor? If you don't change the buildings, um, from a landscape perspective, from an amenity perspective? But that was my reaction, just really getting a sense of the largeness of the buildings in that southern side now.
Yep, thank you. Ms. Polidaro?
Is this combining, uh, the condos from multiple buildings into single buildings again?
Not a single, but, but a single area.
Single area, so...
So, the north, I think, was sixty, and the south was sixty-nine. So, the south, uh, adjacent to the second hotel will be still sixty-nine. And then, uh, thirty, three thousand, thirty-one hundred are sixty.
I'm just trying to get an, um, an idea of what kind of variances and waivers you need from the concept plan. So, I know that you're exceeding the height limit. So, that's one. And then, I was, when we did Bezuto, you needed to get a variance to put everything into, into, to smush it.
Yep.
Um, is that something that you think you need here? Because you're taking it from different parts of the development?
Uh, I mean, I mean...
We're not condensing structures, I don't think, but we are, one of them, I think, was technically in the Village Neighborhood. And then, the other one, I think, was situated in the Crescent Neighborhood, so they're now both kind of in the Crescent.
So, moving from Village to Crescent?
But, I mean, that could be, you know, something that we could add, or the board can, can, can weigh in on it. But the reason why we're, we're doing it is, um, to share amenities.
Mm-hmm. Okay, the, I mean, that's just my question, just trying to understand what, what approvals are needed in order to process the application?
Okay, so, I am gonna double-check on the length, but I, I believe it's less than three hundred feet. The square footage for the units, uh, these figure like sixteen fifty? One thousand, six hundred and fifty square feet per, per unit?
Are they all one-bedroom?
One and a loft, or...
Uh, there, there are two, three bedrooms.
Okay.
Yes.
What's that?
No, I was just, I... Two or three bedrooms?
Yeah.
But they're all the same square footage?
Well, that's the average.
Two and three.
Oh, okay, gotcha, okay.
So, there'll be a mixture?
Yes, yes. Mixtures are good.
Yes.
Villas, yes, I think they were.
Anything else?
They were... Victorian? Uh, no, that's, that's it for now.
Okay. Dylan?
Uh, thank you for the drive-through, thank you for the drone footage, really, like, appreciate the thoroughness of this workshop presentation quite a bit. You know, as Bonnie was saying, like, we have, we all understand that this was a, a sketch plan, or, you know, a, a concept plan. We're all aware that these, that these things change, it's a question of how far we are willing to, to, to go with them. We have moved from a knit-together series of smaller buildings to what feels, uh, Tad described it as urban, I wouldn't even say, I'd say almost, it feels Office Park to me, almost, like in the senses where we've got... Tad described it as urban, this, this, I would describe, I wouldn't even describe it that way, it feels almost Office Park-like to me, where you have these large...
Okay.
Large, you know, Towers in the Park kind of thing, right?
Okay.
It's a very different feel, a very different design, concept. You know, I... I would love to see something lower, something with, that, that hugs the landscape a little more than just the rectangles. I understand, you said, you looked at a U, and this is more efficient, I, I get that. And, and efficiency is important, but it's not the only thing. And I, I think, you know, we're getting into this, we're just getting these large, we're getting blocks, large blocks. And it's, it's limiting, it's our diversity of style, our diversity of, of, um, building type. This feels very similar to the apartment building, and so now, smaller, but it's a similar style, similar idea. And so, now we've got five of those. I'll, I'll leave it at that for, for now, I, I don't, I don't react super positively to, to the specifics of, of the, the plan. I liked having them on either side of the village, um, I understand sharing amenities, I get that. I think, though, that trying to squeeze that many units into this area is part of why we're getting the design that we are. And I know it would be more challenging to have to have some, you know, doubles of, of a couple of amenities. But this whole site has, depending on what amenities you're talking about, um, the site obviously has open space scattered throughout. There are a variety of things that, that it feels like could exist on the north side and the south side, anyway. I, I just, I think we're gonna have an easier time getting a design that we all like and feel better about with some units on the south and, and some units on the north, so I, I'll put that out there. Uh, the only other thing that I would say is, uh, I want to sort of echo Ann, that the placement of the, um, of the Hotel Villas feels odd to me. There is clearly a desire for some privacy or some separation for those. You've, you've stopped the sidewalk in front of them and brought it over to the other side. And it feels like an interruption in the middle of, you know, the townhouses and condos and sort of a more active area. You've got this, I don't know, it feels like it should be more secluded or more separate than it is, but it's right in the, in the middle of all of that. So, um, I, I think that, that could be rethought as well.
Okay.
Yep, so, again, thank you very much for the thorough presentation, I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much for that. Rob?
Well, the massing, you know, is, is helpful in the sense that you're basically looking at what the volume of the structure is.
Right.
And, and it's leaving off a lot of things that, that are open to interpretation in your mind of, now you're seeing that, and now you're assuming that it's just, you know, gonna be this big, uh, monster of a structure. But, but I think the, the real key is, again, I'll, you know, and I emphasized it on the other building, is the tiering of these things, is to have some step downs, some undulations, and some ins and outs, and pull. You know, so it's not so...
Blocky.
Blocky, like Lego-ish. And, you know, and that's not a, that's not, I'm not just saying that because it's, you know, I understand how the construction works, you know, and, and that you're building on a platform, I kind of like that idea because it, it's hiding the parking, so that, that, that works well. But it does, now, it, it forces the buildings, again, vertical. And when we first started this, you know, I mean, we were concerned about, I think, forty-three feet at one, one area in, in this complex. You know, when, you know, when we first did a walkthrough and we, uh, I think we sent up drones then, early on in this. And we were like, forty, you know, like, we were, now we're at like sixty feet, you know, like, it's like, so, so it's, it's just growing, it's growing. But, you know, it really is gonna, the emphasis is gonna really be on the architecture, because this is not Hyde Park. I could, you know, I mean, uh, there's no way that this is Hyde Park. So, so how do we, how do we bring Hyde Park, Hyde Park elements into the architectural part of it? And I think that's gonna be where this will change from like, wow, this is just crazy big, to, oh, okay, I understand it now. And, and my other concern is that the structures should not mirror each other. Like, what's happening with the townhouses shouldn't, that, that kind of a architecture? Because that was outside of the, what I think most people were comfortable with originally, when it was a little bit more modern. And that, that was because of the, the developer was leading that a little bit on, on that, and, which, which, which was fine, it works. But to have that now as the main thing going forward would be, I think, would be a big mistake. So, how do we bring it back now, so that these, these structures look different? Now, the con, the condos here and the condos here should look the same. I kind of like that the, the, um, the villas, the, the Hotel, um, villas...
Yeah.
Are separated, because otherwise, I think you would be putting blocks next to blocks. So, I think it, it gives you a chance to, to change it a little bit and to break it up. And that's what it needs to do, it just needs to explode a little bit more. And I think, I think with the right architectural feel to these buildings, and bringing back in some of the Hyde Park character, I think it could, it could work.
Okay.
You know, but, but right now, when I look at it, it's like, you know, it's a lot to digest, so...
It, it's a block.
It's a block, yeah.
That's what it is.
And I understand that, I understand, you know, the, the, why you consolidated them, it's easier to build it that way. It, it gives you, it, yeah, it's less expensive. We're not supposed to worry about, that's not, our goal is financial. We take into consideration that, but it's not something that, the board is not supposed to be really looking at that from a standpoint of, you know, we just want it to work, we want it to be developed, we want it to happen, so how do we make it happen? That's, that's the key. So, I think, again, I think the architectural part of it is gonna be...
Yep.
Really a driving force.
I, I, I agree, um, you know, these things, um, nobody's gonna buy it unless it's a special building.
Yeah, yeah, I, 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 I agree with that. And I think, you know, and I think that's where elements, the materials chosen and all could be...
We, we, we agree with that.
Yeah, yeah, so, and that's, right, for right now, that's what I have. But I did agree with everything that everybody has said, too, I could see it. But, so, it's, it's really gonna be dependent upon you, how you in- introduce this to us the next, you know, uh, through different versions of this as we move forward. That's the thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Rob.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you so much, Rob. Stephanie, welcome back, what are your thoughts?
I, I, I want to actually start with something about the cost. We are not supposed to take cost into consideration, but I think it's important that you know that we understand... Why you're doing it, okay? And, and, uh, I agree with everyone that's spoken already, most particularly with Dylan, Dylan's comments. I thought they were really very similar to my thoughts. This will sound harsh, but to me, it's, the whole project's becoming without any charm. And that's what's bothering me, is just big blocks. I understand it's just massing, but it's not at all like that, so I'm just gonna leave it there.
Thank you. John?
Well... I, I, I come back to this project that I walk a lot in, it's the one across the border from Connecticut... Into Connecticut, it's right across the border in Danbury, so it was built by Toll Brothers. And, um, you, it, it's, there's no commercial up there, but there's a lot of homes up there, there's townhomes, there's apartments. There's a couple of buildings up there that are very big, like the ones you're proposing, I think those are the apartments. Imagine, and it's in the, it's in the hillside, it's got nice roads and sidewalks and trails, no commercial, but... It's almost like they built communities within communities, they're separated. And it's kind of like what I'm, I don't, it's hard for me to say, because I don't know, I can't conceptually get the distance down between the buildings... In, in my mind yet, but they seem disconnected, maybe? I do, don't mind the townhouses or the, uh, the long-term rentals for the, for... I do don't mind the townhouses or the long-term rentals for Bella Field. Those, I mean, I would, you know, they're going to be like residential. So people are just going to stay there maybe a month, two months, six months. So them staying there, you know, that doesn't bother me. I'm more concerned about having, like as you roll or walk through the woods, you come upon this massive building, right? And it almost seems like an isolated community. And then you keep walking and you come upon another isolated section. The way the master plan conceptually, as I saw it, was like, as a Hyde Parker, this whole project is not Hyde Park, right? But that doesn't make it bad. It's fine. And because we have nothing like this in Hyde Park. We never have. We don't even really have a true village. Our village burned. I mean, the truth is, we have a few buildings that is the town center where we're sitting. So, I mean, it doesn't make it bad. I mean, this is new. This is groundbreaking. And it's a good thing. I just, I kind of like the idea of creating connected communities. Somehow connected communities. I think even if you build this, the height doesn't bother me because I don't think you're going to see the buildings. So I don't know if I really have a problem with having it higher. I'm just more concerned about having large square buildings. And I'm not sure how architecturally you can dress them up. I mean, I'm sure you can do things on the outside, et cetera, maybe, you know, like Rob was saying, et cetera. I definitely understand why you're doing it. I'm not sure, do you have a developer that's looking at it?
Mm-hmm. The reason why we broke up the buildings is for financing.
Yeah.
You know, couldn't do the U because you're, you know, the bank wouldn't fund until you get a certain number of units sold. And so if you make that number of units that you got to sell lower, then you get there sooner.
Is that why you combined the north with, the north units with the south units?
That's why we separated the U-type building or make them more clustered.
Okay.
So.
Now, when you say patio homes, were they two-story buildings?
Yes.
Okay. So they would have been two-story buildings. They look like, you know.
Well, again, that was a concept plan. They didn't deal with circulation, parking. You know, again, we're taking 60 spaces and putting it underground. You don't see it.
I mean, I like it. That I like. I like that a lot.
These buildings, that building's 800 feet off of Nine.
Yep.
And the other one's almost 400 feet off of West Dorsey.
I just want to, I mean, it's hard to say. I mean, okay, so you do away with the patio homes. You build those, the condos there and there. The distance between the two, are they just going to look like two disconnected buildings with lots of people?
No, no, I totally agree with.
I'm not trying to pick it apart. I'm just trying to conceptually.
What's going to drive the sales is how beautiful these buildings are. These boxes, nobody's going to buy. But it's a massing that we're.
Yep. Get it?
conveying to the board that we're burying the garage. So it's not five stories, it's four.
You know, like I said, I don't have a problem with the height. I don't have a problem with the, you know, the long-term rentals for Bella Field at all. I kind of like them there. I like the townhomes the way they are. I like all that. I guess I'm just not sure about how the other two sections fit.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. It is, we have a variety of, I'm, I struggle, I'm a very visual person, so this is why I love the.
You ask for it, we deliver.
Exactly. Because I can't, I look at that and it tells me nothing. And looking at the, at your proposed site plan tells me nothing. But driving around in the neighborhood gives me a much better feel for things. And, you know, I hear, I hear and I understand, and I agree with many of the comments that came through here. One of my questions to you is, so if you've combined the northern condos with the ones in the south, does that free up some open space in the north? Is that, is that where we were putting the amphitheater?
The amphitheater is up there.
Does that kind of make that easier and make that happen better?
We envision it more, instead of resi next to the, the commercial is an extension of the commercial or the retail. That's the idea. Smaller, much smaller, but who knows?
Yeah, yes. And I think that, I think you've just captured it. It's the, who knows? So as, as this is laid out and I can see it, and to be honest, maybe in my mind, I always envisioned a bunch of terracotta roofs.
Yeah.
You know, like Italian villas with terracotta roofs. I don't know. And now reality is coming in. And one of the things I really like is the parking's underneath. And that's the trade-off. So by not having everything singular with everybody's cars outside, you have to go up and you put the cars underneath.
Right.
And that's, that is a huge trade-off, which is hard, I think, for a lot of people in Hyde Park to grasp because we don't really have that here.
The buyers want it.
Yes. Well, of course, if I, I mean, yes, understood. It's, and the way the markets are going, it's just not the 50s anymore. So where the markets are going, I personally can't predict. I think we've talked about this 100 times. Whatever the concepts were, we've gone through major recessions, a COVID, a banking crisis. Everything is up in the air. So when you have somebody steps forward and sees your vision and says, I think I can be a part of your vision, but I need this. I think that's where we're going to all have to deal with this because this is the trade-off. Like you said, that never addressed, where are you going to park all those cars for those units and cottage homes? It all looks great, but I think in reality, there's very minimal green in there and it's all asphalt and parking.
Yeah. Here's the amphitheater. We moved the amphitheater to here.
Right, right.
So it's right there.
So, go ahead. No, 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 go ahead.
Just on the villas, there were 32 hotel villas as part of the master plan. Are they all in those four buildings, five buildings?
No, there's just, there are just six here.
Okay. So that's just a piece.
Yep, yep. And then 26 will.
We're envisioning the remainder somewhere up in the Crescent by the second hotel.
Why would you break them out like that?
Well, one, we have a hotel. We have a hotel.
Okay.
You know, ready to go. And there's a market for it. We have somebody.
So are they on individual lots or are they on one?
They're on individual lots, but it's one entity.
They're controlled by the.
We'll have to think through how that works.
Yeah. Those are, those are some things that we're going to have to, like the definition. We've been talking a lot about definitions and what that means.
Okay.
On a lot of different levels, both legal and tax-wise and things like that. But Mike, go ahead.
Are they going to have badging to say they're a part of Bella Field?
Yeah, the what?
Are they going to have badging or signage? Are they just going to look like residential units?
Well, they're going to look like Bellfield.
With the brick and?
Yes, yeah, the whole, stone, you know, stone kind of thing.
But I mean, just like, there'll be a sign that says this is a part of Bella Field?
There's signage, there's actually an entire sign design guide that talks about how people find their units and their neighborhoods and.
So because if you're living across the street, you're living across the street from the villas and they're going to.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have some kind of identification.
I mean, I don't have a problem. I think they're more like residential housing. So they're going to fit.
They're, they're small. The floor plays 600 square feet.
Oh, yeah.
You know, then two floors is 1,200.
So, kind of where I'm at is this, these are trade-offs, right? I like putting the parking underneath if it means that I'm not seeing a ton of cars everywhere. Because we've all driven through those neighborhoods and said, wow, they really didn't design these for cars. I think the other thing that I've been saying is that the south side of this project, if we continue this way, is going to be the more dense, higher congregation of the sites. And then as you go north, it becomes way more residential, way less, like I, what I would not want to see is a request for a 60-foot-tall condo now on the north side. I want to kind of see that start to taper off. And I would be okay with that because the massing here, those pictures, by the way, do such a great job of showing of, those are some huge buildings at St. Anne, at the Culinary.
Yes, yeah.
And they're just, they're, they just blend right in. So I'm okay with, I'm okay with the height.
The southwest corner, you know, being, which are always intended to be, the densest.
Yes. So I agree that architecture is going to make or break it. I also know that there's not a lot that you can maybe do with it, but, you know, if they're going to build it, then they're going to need to sell it. So.
Exactly. Yeah. And.
Yeah.
They have to be very unique.
The other thing I really liked is how much green space that you have. And there are amenities and there. I mean, of course, you can put into the massing, which is fine.
Yeah.
But there's going to be.
Let me just go to the site plan.
Are there parks and dog parks? Like if you walk out of the building, where are you walking?
Right. Where do I put, where does my dog go?
So this is, what's that distance right there? Let me zoom in. I got.
Eighty-four feet of large.
Okay. So 84 feet here, and then this is, that's a, that's a pool there, that's a community center. These are walkways that are all tying together. So.
The building length is right there. I think it says 214.
Okay, 214. So it's 200 by 100, basically 20,000 square feet of courtyard.
And they're, and they're open courtyards. So it's, yeah. Anyway, I see a lot of trade-offs here. Again, it's going to have to, your architecture is going to have a lot to play in.
I'm not sure that this showed in the.
I don't think that showed anything there.
If that showed it, then it would show it stepping down.
Yep. I'd love to see the areas that John was describing outside of Danbury, these.
Yeah, I've been there.
Okay.
By the Hilton, right?
Well, there's a, there's a hotel up in the back. Then there's a hospice they built up in the back. And there's townhomes. And then you come up around and there's apartments up on a hill. And it's multi-elevations, right? It looks beautiful.
Yeah.
But the communities are segregated.
Right. And just looking at that, so you're going to have these tall buildings for the condos. You're going to have three-story townhouses, two-story homes. Right there is a nice mix of, it's different. And they're not cut off. They're across the street from each other. They're all going to be neighbors.
I'm going to zoom this out a bit.
But it sounds like all the amenities are with, in the courtyard. But what's going, you know, what happens in the spaces between all these uses to connect them all?
There's, the trail that we showed on the remainder plat runs behind this. And it'll all connect to it.
And we're, you know, we're hoping to be able to do the lake here.
Yeah.
And I think we circled up to have a park near the lake element. That would obviously be accessible to everybody.
There's a walk that comes down here that will tie to this lake that wraps all the way around. And these guys will feed them right into it.
Yeah.
I think the lake will add character to it.
Yeah, it'd be good if that goes through. All right. So.
Yeah, that requires.
Would you say you've gotten some comments?
Yes, yes, we got comments. I'm going to talk to the developer on the massing. And then on the, when we come back, so we get to 16th, right?
Yes.
16th, we'll.
Two weeks.
We'll present some more thoughts.
Okay.
Okay. And we'll show you more about how the sidewalk and the outdoor amenity work.
You are, and just remember, you're creating the first real neighborhood here. This is a mix of types. This is, you know, this is okay. You have different developers on them. How does it, to Victoria's point, if I'm living in any of those, I don't want to see gates and stuff and go, oh, wow, you know, they're, they're having a lot of fun in there. I wish I could, I wish I could do something in there, but I have nothing over here.
From a grade standpoint, this is kind of a knob right here, a high knob.
Yep.
It just fits perfect there. And then this one here is also another high knob. So this is where you want to.
You're working with the contours.
We're working with the contours.
Larry, would there, I'm just throwing this out because there's been discussions about that scale and the villas. Do the villas have to go there? Could you actually put another smaller apartment building in that space where the villas are so that you might be able to scale back a little bit the others? Again, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out like.
Scale back what elements are you talking about? Sorry?
So the bar buildings, you might be able to scale them back a little bit if you were to put a smaller building.
Oh, it's part of the condos?
Where the villas are instead.
Pull units out of here and put it in here.
Could you create a building there to give some diversity? And maybe some scale diversity? I'm just throwing that out there.
But wouldn't you just have another block building whereas we have six very different looking?
Well, that's, that's where you could tier those down and you just take those units and you just move them somewhere else.
Yeah. That's what I mean, like tier, exactly. Tearing it down or making it some diversity.
Keep some of them at the four stories.
Yeah.
But, but maybe they tier down to three in some, some areas and then pop back up, you know, to just create a little interest. Plus, it'll break up those roof lines. That's, that's a concern that we really have. That's brutal. The roof lines, the ridge.
Yeah, yeah. Fortunately, we're not 500, 600 feet long this time.
Yeah, right. And I will, the other thing that just, that popped in my mind is we do have a, I think it's a five-story apartment building on the north side of town in Statsburg, which, which you don't see. It's behind, it's behind a nursing home.
It's full five stories, living five story? Okay.
Heritage points behind it.
Yeah, Heritage Point. Yep, yep.
Oh, okay. Oh, definitely. It's St. Anderson and Renaissance.
Yep.
These here, we like because pedestrian sidewalk access right to the hotel. Very convenient.
And again, it fits within the contours and.
It's less dense, you know, so you go from this to this to that. And, you know, the parking can be handled in the driveway. There's no parking lot, you know, that you have to deal with. So.
So you're using this to pull off, off the road into your driveway on those, on those in particular?
Yeah. And we've looked at other massing models of this for our internal use. And it looks like it fits in there.
And just, since you have that up, the only other thing is that roundabout is, it's very weird they're going east to have those two, I think you need to have just one.
Well, this, good, watch this. You ready?
Yep.
Boom.
And it's gone, just like that.
Just like that.
Thank you.
We got this one in today.
Thank you.
No, I mean, when I first did that, when I go, no, no, that's not going to work. So, did it like that.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, of course, the grading. That was the first layout. And then now, when we graded it, you know, we tightened it up. This is for fire, you know, access.
Ah, right.
That is, this one here has the hammerhead here. Turn it around.
Okay. Wow.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Yep.
All right.
Yes. And Cynthia will send out a reminder for the 4:30 portion.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Dylan, yep, thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is Camp Victory Lake Auditorium.
Patiently waiting.
I'm loading.
Long time no see.
Hasn't dampened his spirits though.
Oh, look at this, right in front of us, thank you. I love that. Right? Thank you.
Although it's high light.
I go down so you don't have to block your face.
It's okay, it's got a face that's worthy of blocking. All right. Hello, everyone.
Welcome back.
It's been a while, I think it's been like two years since I last saw you all, new faces too, nice to see you.
Yep.
Yeah, it's been, I think it's two years. Yeah, I know, that was the last time.
Wow.
That was last year.
That was last year.
But two years ago since we were here for Camp Victory Lake.
Yes.
And so, here we are.
But there's been a lot happening on the site.
Mm-hmm.
That's why we're here.
Yeah.
Fortunately.
Yes, and as you can see, we don't have a full crowd tonight, but Dylan is new since you've been here, and we also have another new member who you will meet.
And congratulations to you all.
Oh, boy, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, so, give us your story.
All right, here's the story, so, all right, in two thousand twenty-three, we're here for Phase One of the Camp Victory Lake Master Plan Build-Out, which was this large forty-seven thousand-square-foot religious assembly hall where there was a stage, we had stadium seating, so we had gone through the planning board's site plan and special use permit approval for that for a number of years, since I started working at my current firm and continue to do so. And at two thousand twenty-three, we'd actually gotten it approved with a site plan, Phase One, and a special use permit for the full build-out. One of the things that happened during that approval process was, do I have the site plan up?
Yes, you can. Oh, you can't see it.
Yeah, I can't see, I'll guess, I, I've spent so much time doing them, so. One of the things that came up at the time was, we had a member of the organization that had gone rogue and had done a little, a couple of outdoor improvements. So you'll see two open-air pavilions here, so during that time, those were constructed without permits. And so what we had done, with Michael as chair, was we added those into the Phase One site plan approval for those pavilions. A number, so we had eventually gotten that all approved, and now it's going to be added to the site plan. And then a year goes by, we're still working on closing out the conditions of approval, which included Health Department, some final nodes, when the site, the town fire inspector had gone at the request of Camp Victory Lake to take a look at the interior of the auditorium structure to just confirm that the layout inside was meeting fire code. What no one was aware of at the time was that the interior of the structure had undergone significant renovations where there was a number of interior improvements and some exterior improvements as well, we'll go over that. But essentially, the whole interior structure had been altered and improved to some degree. So at that time, the violations were issued for the Camp Victory Lake site, meaning that, have you even, we worked on the conditions of approval, we still wouldn't have been able to get the final site plan signed because of those violations. So since then, we had met with the building inspector at the time, who, we had provided him the set of preliminary plans that the interior improvements were constructed on, and he had taken a look at them and said, this does not meet New York State Building Code. And so from then, we had worked with the original architect, who had designed the preliminary plans, as well as SMA Architecture, who had helped us design the religious sanctuary in the Phase One to go forward and move, and develop the actual improvement plans to meet New York State Building Code compliance. So as we were working through these plans, we realized that, uh-oh, this, this structure is now, because of the totality of the renovations, it goes beyond the threshold of, oh, you, there's a threshold where at some point you, I forget the exact number, but a percentage of the structure altered doesn't mean you have to meet full New York State Building Code compliance. However, the entire structure was renovated, and so our current architect, SMA, determined that this structure will now need bathrooms. So the structure, now in a little background, had always been an assembly structure. We had documented on the master plan approvals at the time, it was designed for a thousand and fifty people, that was what was documented on our master plan approvals, not entirely sure where that number came up with, but there was a stage, and it had always been used for assembly. And so moving forward, we, with the additions that they did in the interior, they are now going to have to do the bathrooms, so, and another addition would be the inclusion of a sprinkler system, which the facility did not have pre-renovation. So essentially, what we're here for tonight is to go through the site plan approval process for what I like to call Phase Zero of the master plan, which is the remediation phase that will then allow us to proceed with the subsequent phases outlined on the master plan. So to go over what Phase Zero entails is, we'll be doing the bathroom additions, which will be constructed in that thirty-five-hundred-square-foot structure, that structure is a mixture of bathrooms and an atrium space. So the design behind this is that this facility, because the camp hosts numerous events throughout the year, could be opened separately in the event that we didn't need the full eleven-thousand-square-foot space, but we did need the bathrooms and atrium space for either check-in or to provide additional bathroom facilities. So now that's designed as a separate addition to the structure. We're also proposing to construct a nine-hundred-square-foot open-air trellis canopy, and that's just to meet, again, building code compliance of having egresses covered, but also to give a little flair to that side of the structure. And additionally, the open-air pavilions, how they were constructed at the time, they were a little too close, or one of them was a little too close to the auditorium building itself by about a foot. So to meet building code compliance, we need a minimum of thirty feet of separation. So the eastern open-air pavilion will have to be taken down and reconstructed to meet that thirty-foot separation of the structure. So, yeah, so, and another part of this is, so, as I was saying before, the original auditorium never had any bathrooms, there was no water hookups, there was no bathrooms. So part of this now includes the addition of those bathroom facilities and the connection of those facilities to the camp's existing water supply and wastewater treatment plant, which is on the northern side of Fall Kill Creek. So luckily, we have extensive conveyance piping throughout the site, so that's pretty easier, a linear track right into an existing sewer manhole and then out to the plant. We're also proposing the addition of an underground sprinkler storage tank, which should then feed the structure itself and provide water for that sprinkler system, so it won't be pulled directly from the water supply, but an actual reservoir of water in the tank. And so ultimately, all the improvements to this structure will increase that capacity from the ten thousand, or one thousand and fifty to about one thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine. So a marginal increase in the capacity of the structure, and that's provided via the mezzanine that was installed, because originally, the structure did not include a mezzanine, that was then installed. But that ultimately, that number, that one thousand, two hundred-and-so people, that is not an increase of use for the site. The site already regularly has events of over four thousand, our previous design building was for, I believe it was thirty-nine-hundred guests. So this doesn't really represent any increase of use, it's more of a formalization of an existing use and a remediation of the violations that were issued for the project site. So tonight, again, we just wanted to introduce the flavor of Phase Zero and get your initial feedback on the project, outline subsequent approvals that this project will need. As I had mentioned, the project occurred two years ago, Phase One, and the master plan approvals, those approvals have since expired, and so therefore, we'll have to come back and get Phase One approval after we remediate these violations in Phase Zero. So I wanted to kind of talk to the board about that and see what's the next steps on approval for the master plan in relation to the Phase Zero and Phase One, and then also to set a time, if the board wants to, to have a site walk so we can see the auditorium renovations ourselves.
I think they may have all seen them already.
Yeah, you guys may have seen them, they have a beautiful terracotta roof, which we did ahead of time because we heard you liked it.
Had a huge HV.
And huge, yeah.
That was from the first one.
Yes, and huge, shiny HV systems, which we're proposing to screen using evergreen screening and also paint and screen with additional fencing.
Well, we talked about it once before, and it was just never done.
Yes.
It wasn't done because we were waiting to finish the Health Department check on the other one.
Right.
We were right about to do it when we received the violation.
Yeah, so because we weren't able to get that final site plan approval and sign-off, theoretically, we weren't authorized to complete any of that mitigation work. So now, we're here for that, and hopefully, we'll get these, this site plan approval signed, and then we'll get those painted, and then we'll provide everyone on the board a nice pair of sunglasses in the meantime.
Thank you so much, we're, again, we're hap, we're really happy that you came back, and we're sorry that, we're, I mean, this is a lot of additional expense for, for the applicant, but I'm always happy to see you, and we'll work to get this all documented and remediated and, and move on to Phase One. So I'm going to ask Tad to give, give us any of your impressions.
I think Peter did an excellent job of explaining the situation. It sounds logical to go through a Step Zero and include it as part of a, as part of the master plan.
It helps them to get back to where they need to be.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, and to just touch base on that, is what we did is, we added Phase Zero into the master plan approval set that we had prepared for the original set of approvals, we even added a nice little Phase Zero in the phasing plan, so.
So are you proposing to come in with both at the same time, or is this just for Phase Zero?
Are you referring to Phase One?
Yes.
Yeah, so right now, our sole focus is on remediating the violations through Phase Zero. So we're not pursuing reapprovals of Phase One site plans at this time.
Okay. Were there any other comments, Tad?
No.
Okay, Ms. Ranson.
A great and thorough presentation, I remember parts of the site because we were out there looking at the parking, the pavilion. That's okay, the parking, the pavilion, I remember the very shiny HVAC equipment. But definitely welcome an opportunity to walk the site again, I think that will help a lot to understand the context and the need for remediation, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Polidaro.
Just moving forward, the board will need to classify the action, I think we should think through whether this is Type Two or whether it's, somehow exceeds that, just based on the totality of what's happening. That's it?
Thank you. I'm going to start to my right, Mr. Garcia.
Tail of wool. Yeah, I feel bad, I mean, you gotta tear down that outside structure to move it one foot.
I think it's actually like eight inches.
Inches?
Yeah.
Can't cut it?
Can't get, make a choice.
Not really.
Eleven-litre. That's a tough one.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, but ultimately, we got to meet fire code, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to say, I mean, I'd be interested to see inside the, the building, though.
Come on the site, one.
Yeah.
No, no other comment, so.
Thank you. Ms. Watson.
Thank you. Peter, you always make me smile. I mean, I just look forward to every time you're in front of us.
It makes it easy, you guys are so pleasant to deal with, I have other boards that are way
It depends, it depends. Thank you for the presentation, and I'm really glad you're taking care of all of this, I'm sorry you have to go through it, but this is the proper foundation before you can move forward, so we're here for you.
Perfect.
Mr. Waters.
Yeah, no, I, I can't, I wasn't going to be pleasant. Because you smile like that.
Now you're hemming me up, and I'm going to blush. We're supposed to be arguing.
Yeah.
No, not tonight.
Just fix it.
That's what we're here for.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle.
Have you, do you have a, you know, so we'll go through site plan here, and then there will, I, I, all the work that was done on the interior, has a building inspector looked things over, are there any other concerns about things that are not, like the mezzanine and such is all built to code and is all good to go?
So part of what we need to do, he, the building inspector has directed us to obtain site plan approval first. First and foremost, he will not look at our building app, or building plans until we receive site plan approvals. But beyond that, we've been in the background, working with contractors to dig up what was installed and get an actual accurate report of what was installed, what's up to code, what isn't up to code, what needs to be fixed. So we've been working on this in the background, we just need to get through the site plan approval process before we move forward with that.
They just want to make sure that we don't approve for site plan anything that then doesn't meet muster.
No, that's, yeah, that's not at all what we're here for, so.
Yeah, great, okay.
Thank you so much. So, there you go, everybody's happy you're back, sorry three for the reason why. But I, I think this makes sense, and Victoria, how, how will we decide the action?
I think, if we're going to do the site walk, I think that'd be helpful, I mean, to me, I'm leaning towards Type Two, but I want to just confer with engineering and planning.
Yep, understood, okay, so I would ask that we all, I'd like to do the site walk sooner rather than later.
Yep.
You know, it's summer, so maybe after work some night, or, you know, we're not really limited to just weekends, so we can throw out a couple of dates, might include a weekend day, but maybe see what we can schedule. And if you could work with Cynthia, and Cynthia will ask us and.
Do you have, do you have campers at the site now, is it a problem?
There is, yeah, but they're not on that end of the camp.
Okay.
So they're, they're nowhere near the, since we don't.
We can go in a different entrance?
You can go from the main, and you can go from the very first one.
Yes.
And there's no campers to that end of the camp.
Okay.
Excellent.
So you can just give us the dates.
Great, yeah, so we'll get that scheduled in.
Soon, everybody's hoping, they couldn't use it all summer, the kids can't use it.
Yeah.
So it's like, and they see the pavilions outside, they want to go there.
Like, why can't we use it, we don't understand.
They don't understand, so we're hoping to get it done sooner than later.
All right, so we'll get that scheduled and get you back on the agenda.
Perfect.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, and I received some initial comments from you during our initial pre-application meeting, we will work on addressing that immediately, and then if you guys have comments at the site walk, we'll incorporate that into those revisions and get everything packaged up and resent in.
Sounds good.
Perfect.
Thank you so much for coming out and for going about the other, the other project, and appreciate your patience.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for.
And again, if anyone has any questions, feel free to email me, I'm happy to answer with a call, email, whatever it is, so.
Great.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Have a nice night.
You too.
So our next item on the agenda is a, kind of carrying on the discussion that we've just had here, and that is prior to this faith, to Phase Zero, Phase One was done when our, when our planning board engineer was with a different firm, but now our planning board engineer is now with the same firm, so we need to consider another
Alternate.
Alternate from a different company, and we have been blessed to actually have a really well-qualified, qualified one from our planning board engineer's former company, so he should be able to have access to, you know, the files that would, that were used, so it should be a, a nice transition, yes, exactly.
I think also CPL has the files from the last time they were before the board.
Right, exactly, yes, yes, so I would like to ask the board, we have a resolution here, I want you to consider hiring CPL as an alternate engineer, and we are talking directly with Andy Lern, just for those of you who know Andy.
Who's now been elevated to senior planner.
Yes, yes, exactly.
And everyone saw the contract, I said, all right?
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
So unless there's, we'll have an opportunity for discussion, otherwise, I'm going to read the resolution to appoint CPL Architecture Otherwise, I'm gonna read the resolution to appoint CPL Architecture, Engineering, and Planning as the alternate engineering consultants for 2025. It's resolution number 25-B. Whereas, whereas, now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby authorizes the chairperson assigned said contract to engage CPL Architecture, Engineering, and Planning for the year 2025.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any absentions or abstains, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Looking forward to getting this off and moving. Our next item on the agenda is the enclave at Hyde Park. This is an extension of the special use permit and site plan approvals for the site. They have, we need to set a public hearing for July 16th, 2025 in order to consider that. May I have a motion to set a public hearing for July 16th?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Our next item on the agenda is Vanderbilt Lane Morton Lot Line Alteration and Additional Dwelling. This is also, this is, they're almost...
There?
There, they're, they're, this is really just a safeguard for them to consider a resolution to grant them 180-day extension, just in case. And I believe, Dylan, you have this one?
I've got this one, yep. Resolution to extend the time to satisfy the conditions of conditional site plan and final plat approval. Vanderbilt Lane Morton Lot Line Alteration and Additional Dwelling, July 2nd, 2025. Resolution in 2024-29B. Whereas, whereas, whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant two 90-day extensions of time, 180 days total, to satisfy the conditions of subdivision and site plan approval to and including January 10th, 2026.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is site plan waiver for an above, an above ground, no, an in-ground pool, shed, generator, and porch at 13 Curry Lane. This is for Lauren Tarcio.
And I have that one.
Thank you.
Lauren Tarcio, 13 Curry Lane. Site plan waiver, July 2nd, 2025. Resolution 2025-26. Whereas, an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Lauren Tarcio on May 20th, 2025, for the single-family home located at 13 Curry Lane in the Town of Hyde Park. And whereas, whereas, whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the file entitled "Tarcio," regarding the specific request as submitted May 20th, 2025, and in the building permit application filed dated May 7th, 2025.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Are you, are you, Ms. Tarcio?
Ah, you're good.
Well, congratulations.
It's like, were you watching on TV?
She had to be watching. She said, oh my God, it's eight o'clock. Oh, excellent, excellent, well, we wish you, we wish you well with your project. Thank you for coming out. And our last item on the agenda is an adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for your time and excellent input. And thank you to town supervisor for allowing the broadcast of these meetings and have a good night, everybody. Stay, stay cool.
Oh, my God.